7:00 PM, so we'll call the meeting to order. If you wouldn't mind standing and helping me recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So we do have minutes from the regular session from October 26th. All right, so we have motion. Second to Mr. Moriarty, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Do we have any citizens' concerns this evening that we need to address? No? Thank you. We'll also ask at the end, so if something does come up. Communications and announcements, we do have a few. Thirty-eighth Annual Festival of Lights is going to be held on Saturday, December 3rd, at 5:00 PM in front of Holbrook Town Hall. So following a concert of seasonal music, Santa will greet the children and parents. Light refreshments, hot dogs will be served to one and all at the Winthrop Congregational Church. At the conclusion of the celebration, we look forward to seeing everyone there. So that's this Saturday at 5:00. The Holbrook Historical Society will also have their third annual Christmas party. We will have Santa and refreshments and gifts from Santa Claus himself. It's going to take place at the Roberts School, which is the historic society building on Union Street, which is 320 Union Street. This is Saturday, December 10th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So we have the Festival of Lights this Saturday, and then the following Saturday is Holbrook Historical Society with Santa. We also have yard waste drop-off. It's also this Saturday, from 8:00 to 1:00, and the following Saturday, the 10th, from 8:00 to 1:00. This is located at Maple Avenue. It's the lower compound for the Department of Public Works. Yard waste may be dropped off at the above site. Yard waste is defined as leaves, grass clippings, garden materials, shrub and hedge trimmings, weeds, weeds and brush. Brush must be tied in lengths not to exceed three feet. The maximum limb size is three inches in diameter. Stumps will not be accepted. Holbrook residents only, no commercial waste. Residents may take yard waste to the drop-off site in biodegradable paper bags or any other type of container. Only the biodegradable bags will be left, can be left at the site. All other containers will be given back to the resident. So that's this Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00, and the following Saturday, December 10th, from 8:00 to 1:00. Tim, do you have anything else as far as announcements?
Just one other thing. So Connie Orlando, as we all know, is retiring tomorrow. It was her last day, and there'll be a luncheon in the Heritage Room tomorrow at 12, 11?
I think it's 11 to 1:00.
11 to 1:00. So if anybody's available and want to say thank you to Connie for all her service to the town, that would be the appropriate time to do so. So those are events. Just a couple of other things. You mentioned the tree lighting ceremony. Looking forward to that, as we do every year. Kudos to the DPW for all their hard work in planting the trees, which at our last meeting, the trees, we talked about the trees. Now they're in the ground, and they're, they appear to be healthy and, you know.
And plenty of water.
Today they are.
No problems with that?
Yep. And, and, you know, everything's ready, everything's ready to turn the switch on, right? So looking forward to that. And a couple of other things. We have a meeting on December 12th with Secretary Beaton from Energy and Environmental Affairs, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, in regards to the Tri-Town Water Plant Initiative. So if you recall, about three weeks ago, we had a legislative tour of both facilities. And there's been an effort to have Secretary Beaton come out and take a look at things and discuss the funding, the potential funding of a new plant. And, and so now we're going to, we're going to have that opportunity on December 12th. So we also, as you all know, the rezoning article passed town meeting, and I spoke with Attorney Bobrowski today, and he's anxious to get started on that. He's starting to go through and do some preliminary work, and meetings, you should be seeing meetings start in January with the, with the group. And we need to put together a small working group to kind of work through, you know, the bylaw and proposed changes. And then there'll also be meetings, obviously, with the planning board, and I'll make sure that we bring Attorney Bobrowski to the Board of Selectmen to go over the proposed changes as well and to get feedback accordingly. The goal is to bring bylaw changes to the May 2017 town meeting. And as we discussed, we're going to include in there a provision for a marijuana zone. And we will have a provision, or probably be a separate bylaw, for affordable housing. So those are needs that we have, and we're going to bundle it all into these articles for the May 2017 town meeting. Benji and I had a meeting, I guess it was last week, on the LED street lighting. And we're going to be bringing gentlemen here to one, to a January meeting, actually, to discuss our options as it relates to that. So in a nutshell, there are actually two options. One is we can request an upgrade through National Grid, and they will, they will make the changes, and they'll put in the new LED lighting. The other option is, which is, seems to be the more popular option with communities, is you purchase the existing lights that we, that we have here from National Grid, and then you go to a third party and you lease to purchase new LED lights. And so question is, why would you want to do that, right? So currently, what we pay for lighting, street lighting, is roughly $130,000, $140,000 a year, correct? Of which, $46,000 of that is for, is a facility charge. So if a light goes out, you know, they come and replace it. So we've been talking about how often we use that, and if you, if you consider how often we're using it now, with the idea that with new lights, we'd be needing to replace them even less frequently, you know, the numbers seem to work. And not, not only that, the, the actual charge for the energy itself goes down dramatically from what we have now to, to the LED. So I know I've talked about this before. We actually had a request into National Grid on our streetlights and what it would cost to replace them. It's approximately $100,000 right now, and that depreciates over time. I believe a price was solicited a couple of years ago, and it was $118,000. So more to follow on that. But I think, I think the LED lights give out, you know, a good quality light. I think they look, I think they look great. That's not the reason to do it, but you're also going to be saving electricity through our provider. Just want to touch upon economic development discussions and activities. We've had a series of meetings with, with folks that are looking to, to develop property in Holbrook. We see activity down with Colonial Federal Savings Bank, and that demo was complete. And I don't know if they, does anybody know if they poured anything yet, or I haven't noticed anything beyond the demo?
Footings.
Footings are in?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's good news. And we've had, you know, just small meeting, you know, with, with the Wayman Street over 55, they came in and met with a small group, and we kind of went over some of the, some of the issues that they may want to consider and address before going formal with the planning board. And these meetings seem to be beneficial. I know Selectmen McGahey was in at least one of them, right, oh, one. And I think there's value added in doing it, and I don't know if you have any thoughts on it, but it, it's something that we'll probably, hopefully, continue to do. And that's my report.
Nice. I know that we talked about solar power within a larger project down at the closed dump. Is that something that might have legs to do on its own now that that project's kind of gone away?
Well, that project actually hasn't gone away, and Jack Walsh wants to come in with a, with a proposal on, on that project in the not-so-distant future.
Okay.
So.
Similar, similar type of thing?
Similar, yeah, very similar. And I suspect we'll see him probably in the next couple of months here, maybe even within the month.
Okay.
And, but that doesn't mean we can't do solar on top of that. That's always been something that was considered as an option.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's valuable land, it's wide open, it's, seems to be perfect, you know, for, for that application.
Right.
I think that you could do, put it on top, the finished product, but they had some other ideas of maybe not making many of them, making a nice place for the town residents.
Right.
Walk and trail.
And I don't know if you, it might be possible to do both.
Yeah.
But I agree. I think the idea behind that project really was aimed at open space for the community to use and enjoy.
All right, good. Any questions for Tim? Thank you. All right, so we do have a hearing in a couple of minutes, but I think we might be able to get through a couple of items. So we will look at ambulance abatement for quarter of July 1st through September 30th. Chief?
Mr. Jevon, evening, gentlemen. Do you recall, this was on the, on your agenda a few weeks back, and one of the numbers, as we noticed during review, was a little bit higher than expected. So we did research that. We got in touch with our representatives from New England Medical Billing, and what that, we determined that was all bona fide. Earlier in the summer, myself, Town Administrator Gordon, and Town Accountant Mosley met with the ambulance billing reps, and we streamlined a couple of the, of the systems, tracking systems that were in place. And so that larger, that larger abatement number for bad debt was, was a write-off of an accumulation of bad debt over the past approximately five to six years. So that will now be being tracked on a monthly basis. You won't see that, that spike again in the future, and that's the reason for, for the numbers that you see in front of you. And I just, you know, respectfully request that you approve the abatements for the...
So typical housekeeping item. We do it every quarter for items that we just can't collect on for any emergency services rendered, you know, by Holbrook Fire. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns regarding this. Kevin, you want to?
Yep. I'll make a, make a motion that we grant the ambulance abatement for the quarter of July 1st.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's written right.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the ambulance abatement for the quarter, including July 1st, 2016, to September 30th, 2016, in the amount of $247,781.76, as recommended by Chief McFadden.
Second. Second to Mr. Moriarty. Any questions on this? All those in favor? Excellent, great, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can get one more in. Benji, we have the winter sand bid. So this is another, another annual bid that we do.
This is the snow ice control that we do every year. We send others out to four or five different companies. We already had two respond this year. PA Landers was one of them, and I believe it was Kingstown.
That's right.
Was the other one, Kingstown Corporation. PA Landers was a low bid, at $15.43 per ton delivered.
Okay. And the other bid was Kingstown Corporation at $15.57 per ton delivered. So it's, it's up a little bit from what we had last year? The price we were able to get last year?
A little bit, yes.
Okay. Okay. What's that? No questions? No? Good.
I move the Board of Selectmen award the wash sand bid for ice control contract for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, to the lowest responsible bidder at a rate of $15.43 per ton delivered to PA Landers, Inc., 351 Winter Street, Hanover, Mass., as per the recommendation of Superintendent of Public Works.
Second. Motion, second to Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, we do have a hearing. It is 7:15. So notice is hereby given under Chapter 140 of Massachusetts General Laws that the Holbrook Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 30th, 2016, at 7:15 in the Selectmen-Nolsey-King Meeting Room, Holbrook Town Floor, 3R, 50 North Franklin Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts, on the application of Very Big Cookies Company Incorporated, doing business as Very Big Cookies Company, for a common vic license for the purpose of serving prepared food at 783 South Franklin Street in Holbrook, Massachusetts. So a motion to open the hearing? Second. By Mr. Lee, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Hi, folks, how are you?
Hi! We're good.
Great, so if you wouldn't mind, yeah, if you wouldn't mind standing just in front of us, introduce yourselves, a little bit about your company, and if we have any questions, we'll, we'll ask.
My name is Tom Provost, owner and partner of Very Big Cookies. We offer cookies, biscotti, milk, coffee, water, no soda, no juice. And that's our business. We plan on doing 16-inch deep dish, very big cookie cakes, or just a big, in case you don't like cake, you can have a big 16-inch party cake, cookie. All the cookies are made from scratch, on premise, with the best ingredients I can find locally. We have Thatcher Farms from Milton as our milk provider. We have Equal Exchange out of East Bridgewater. They also roast in Canton and Stoughton as our coffee vendor. We also have, let's see, Deacon's Cranberries out of Wareham for one of our cranberry sources. And then Sparrow's Chocolates out of East Boston for all our chunks. So I'm an executive chef by trade. This company was, let's see, was born probably about 13 years ago, but my wife and I were growing our family, and we didn't have time for it. So now they're in college, and I guess we have time for it. So, yeah, empty nesters opened up a cookie shop, so here we are.
Do you own any other facilities, or have you owned other facilities with the same concept?
No, we rented, I think, for about three months in Quincy, but the landlord had some major issues with the building. It really didn't go that far, and unfortunately, it didn't, it didn't make it at that location. So that was very discouraging, and this is the farthest we've ever come, and it's, financially, we're very comfortable that we can do this, so.
Great, great. And you're Randolph residence?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, great. Any questions? So your hours of operation are going to be 10:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, Monday through Saturday?
Yes, sir.
And Sunday, 12 to 6:00?
Actually, 12, Sunday will be closed on 12, sorry, will be closed on Sunday.
Closed on Sunday. Well, you can operate your business however you want. I guess we already have it as, as the hours of operation, so if you choose to, to open on Sunday, you won't have to come back to us.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So you can run your business however, you can open for one hour a day if you wanted to.
Yeah, we could.
If you're real confident in your product, right?
Yeah, because I'm a Christian Education Director at the first Congregational Church of Randolph, so I run the Sunday Go Program, and then I go to Christian Education Committee meeting once per Sunday of the month, and my head Tom is a senior deacon at the church, so he's also active within the church, that's why.
So Sundays are, you have other things going on?
Yeah, Sundays go to something else, so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. If you have any questions.
Should have brought some samples.
Oh, you should have brought some samples! Let's go back to the shop and get it.
I promised Heidi that she gets the first oatmeal cookies, and we'll see if...
Oatmeal raisin.
Oatmeal raisin, see if we can get them dropped off tomorrow.
Fantastic.
So we, we received our licenses, I think, last week, but we wanted to wait for the hearing to make sure that we could operate. And nervous as heck, but it's a good nervous.
Well, we wish you the very best of success, and the spot that you have is a good one, and you've got a lot of great equipment, I hear, so that...
Yes, we've heard a lot of things, but it looks like they just got up and walked out. We've been dealing with Bonnie Bosel, the landlord, and she's very happy to have us.
Nice, great, we are, we are as well.
Thank you.
Would you entertain a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen grant the request for a common vicular's license in the name of Very Big Cookies Company, Inc., doing business as Very Big Cookies Company, for the purpose of serving prepared food at 783 South Franklin Street, with the term of the license to expire on December 31st, 2017.
Second. By Mr. Lee, all those in favor? All right, congratulations.
Yes, we have a big truck, yay! Thank you, thank you, so everybody can eat and fit, fit and eat and drink cookies and milk and coffee, right? Yes?
Yes.
Awesome, and I'm just curious, how will our business support Holbrook? Do we have to charge the sale tax to the customer?
I believe so. We don't have, we don't have a meals tax in Holbrook?
Okay.
So you have a state taxes, you'd still have to...
Yeah, we...
We don't have a local, a local meal tax.
Okay. There's a few details, but we're going through the register programming.
Yeah, that, that's fine, and Tim and Margie can certainly kind of help escort you through if you have any questions or need, you know, anything, anything kind of answered about the town, about where to go, who to get help from, or, or that sort of thing.
Okay, cookies you like.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my first question. But this is my wife Carla Provost, she's the loudest person I know, and thank you very much.
Well, I think I'm loud because I'm hearing up here, and I wear hearing aid, and, you know, if I can hear myself talk, then I know you guys can hear me talk.
We certainly can.
My mom had jammies when she was pregnant with me, so that's how I got my hearing loss. I wear hearing aid in this ear, and I'm deaf in this ear. And I'll be 52 on Friday.
Please come by for a cookie.
We certainly will.
Okay.
We certainly will. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. High five, Tom, high five. Woo!
Okay, the, we do have another, another here, actual close, motion to close the 7:15 hearing?
So moved.
Okay, it's moved, all of those in favor? Great, thank you. Now it's at 7:20. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws that the Holbrook Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 30th, 2016, in the Selectmen-Nolsey-King Meeting Room, Holbrook Town Hall, 3rd Floor, 50 North Franklin Street, Holbrook, Massachusetts, at 7:20 PM, on the application of Redline Capital LLC, doing business as Redline Motors. Sonny Chen is the resident agent for a Class II license for the sale of second-hand motor vehicles at 204 South Franklin Street in Holbrook. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Matthew Moore. A motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second to Mr. Moriarty, all those in favor? Thank you. Do we have Sonny here? Hi, Sonny, if you wouldn't mind just standing up and approaching us, appreciate that. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, kind of explaining a little bit about the business, and anything else you think is pertinent for us.
Selectmen, my name's Sonny Chen. I am a resident of Quincy, Mass. Redline Capital has started out in Moses Lake, Washington State. We invest in automotive startups. We have an existing dealership in the state of Washington, and we're looking to expand over here. The reason I came back over here is so I can be closer to home. Quincy is home, and Holbrook's so short. And you guys are, you know, a very good town, very quiet town, you guys are great, easy to get to. So for here, my first mission is, you know, to provide quality second-hand vehicles and giving options for financing as well as cash. So it's easier to provide vehicles for people, easier, you know, for people to get around, get to work, and get going with their lives.
Okay, so not only are you going to sell cars, you're also going to provide the financing if, if need be?
Yeah.
Okay. And so this is, just explain to us where, where it is. So two oh four South Franklin, across from the high school?
Correct. Two oh four South Franklin is right next to the convenience store, right across from Holbrook High, as well as probably about a couple buildings down from the police station and fire station.
Do you have signage on South Franklin, or is it, or is it on the side street?
It's not on the side street per se, but I do not have signage. Signage has been taken by the convenience store as well, the granite.
Technical park drive.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, okay. Great. No questions? Any motion? Do you have any questions, Sean?
So how many cars? Four?
Four.
Four. Now, right now, it seems a little congested in there. I was by there today, and I seen like there's a couple dumpsters right as you enter the driveway.
Yeah.
Could those be moved?
Yes, so the drivers of the, the waste company, they're lifting the dumpsters with the, you know, machine for the, on the truck, and just leaving it right back up. They're not placing any emphasis on how to position them. So I'll send an email to the owner of the, of the company to reposition them in a better location.
Okay.
As well as the equipment that's there right now. They, they negotiated a deal over at Avon Truck Storage, where they'll be parked over there.
So who, so the truck, there's a truck there that I see parked on technical park drive, it's a, it's like a Dodge with the trailer on the back, is that?
Yeah, that's company equipment.
Company?
That'll be stored in Avon.
Okay, so it won't be there, that was my next question, okay.
Yeah, it'll be stored in Avon in the, at the trucking center.
Okay. All right, well, it's a, it's a public hearing, I'm not sure if anyone has any, any comments for the applicant? No? Okay.
I move that the Board of Selectmen grant the request for a class-two auto license, dealer's license to Redline Capital LLC, doing business as Redline Motors. Sonny Chen, resident agent at two hundred and four South Franklin Street, with a license premises to include the white garage in the property, the back storage lot, and the garage under the convenience store, with a maximum of four car, four vehicles allowed to be kept outside, with the term of the license to expire on January first, two thousand and eighteen.
A motion? Seconded by Mr. Sheen. All those in favor? Great, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Motion to, to close the, the seven twenty hearing?
So moved.
So moved, all those in favor? All right. I think at this point, we can, I was still waiting on someone from the, the Public Employee Committee for, for that discussion item. So we'll do the updates for Public Safety and the Treasure Collector and Public Works, so. Whoever jumps up first, you get to go.
And the, the police chief is, is sick.
Okay. Paul, how are you?
I need a doctor on vacation. I don't see that, right? Just small updates, we had three properties come out of foreclosure, not come out, go into foreclosure, we just got notification in the last couple of days, so we've got three more properties now that will be available for sale. One that they're trying to negotiate out, getting the payment up before we auction it. And I had three other properties clear their tax titles, so collections going on. Next week, on my next meeting, I'll be up here with a band for the Stan Pipe and Pond Street Ballroom, so I'll need at least three members to be present to sign the band. And another commitment for excise taxes just went out, well, we're going out Monday's mailing, so another bill to pay for some people before, before, right after Christmas, but, but that's it. Nothing else, nothing else new, anyway.
Okay. How much have we collected in the old taxes?
Oh, I don't have a running total. For the month, this month here, the three prop, the three tax titles that paid off came to around a hundred, actually haven't, a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
That's all.
But I can give you, next time you come in, I'll give you the running total.
I think, Paul, what you probably do, every time you come to our meeting, just have where, where we're at for the year.
You can do that, sure.
It makes it, it makes it easier, because you, you know that questions probably going to come up, you know, every, every once in a while, so it'd be good to incorporate into.
Well, I don't think, like, last month, I don't believe there was anything other than small payments on the account, but these are the three, you know, this month, we happen to have the three closings plus three big payoffs, so.
Okay, good.
But I'll do that, yeah.
Anything else for the treasurer? No? Great, thank you.
We'll be scheduling an auction at some point. We're hoping to get it in this month, but it'll probably be, you know, we'll talk, we'll talk to our tax title attorney, they may recommend waiting till spring, you know, once, you know, depending on the weather.
Okay, great, thank you. Department of Public Works?
Okay, we've been busy with, obviously, Christmas lights, getting ready for the ceremony this Saturday. We've been also doing various sidewalk and street paving, trying to get things wrapped up for the fall here, for the winter coming up. Also, the water main job on Pond Street is going very well. The main line is all in, new hydrants, new valves, new services to each home. They're in the final process of tying in the houses right now, so that's going to probably take maybe another three weeks. Hopefully, the weather will hold off, and we'll get them all done. They've been paving as they're going along, I can't say enough about the out, the contract at Sulco. I mean, they've been fantastic.
So it's, the paving that they're doing is a temporary, temporary, right?
Temporary, temporary, permanent.
Yeah.
You know, they're putting four inches of mix, so what they do is, is, as they do the trench, they put three inches of mix in, let it settle, and then they do a five-inch paving for the winter time.
Okay.
And then we'll have to pave that street ourselves, that wasn't included.
Okay.
The price. Also, all of last year's water main jobs have been paved. I'm sure Marge is happy that we've gone to the road, but, and one thirty-nine's been done also, I don't know if you guys have been down there, they come out pretty decent, I thought, they did a great job there, so.
Okay.
And we extended the paving, the scope of the work only went from the, the pump station, which is opposite the Legion, to Lee Mans, but we went right to the town line with the paving, because it would have looked kind of foolish if we didn't, so, you know.
Great, well, thank you for that. Any questions for Public Works? No? Great, thank you very much, Benji. Look forward to the light show on Saturday.
Chief? Good evening, gentlemen. As you've heard, the police chief and director hooker are available this evening. Police Chief Smith is sick, and I regret to report that November hasn't been much kinder to the Holbrook Fire Department staff, and they're off duty hours. We have two members that are out due to injuries that were sustained unrelated to fire department activities. Silver lining is that both are recovering, but unfortunately, we're experiencing higher-than-expected coverage costs at the moment. I'll be keeping the board in town and district posted as both members recuperate over the next couple of weeks and months. In more routine news, we recently mailed out our annual permit renewal letters for activities such as cutting and welding that are regulated under the Massachusetts Fire Code. We'd like to thank the permit holders that have already returned their renewal forms, and, you know, can reach out to through cable access. If anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. We've also initiated one of the two fire department grant projects that recently received approval for funding at the special town meeting earlier this month. We're expecting to receive two cardiac compression devices for the fire department's two transporting ambulances. They should arrive within the next couple of weeks. Those devices will automatically perform high-quality CPR in the event of cardiac arrest cases, and they, they really have a potential to make a positive difference in the outcome of patients that experience sudden, sudden cardiac arrest out of the hospital setting, so I'll keep the board updated as well on the progress of those, of that project as it continues. And finally, I'd like to thank the members of the community that have already donated to the Toys for Tots program. I know the Holbrook firefighters genuinely appreciate the support. Lieutenant Andrew Johnson is the primary contact for this annual endeavor, and the collection box will be up in the Public Safety Building lobby until December nineteenth. And that's my report for this evening. I'd be happy to answer you any questions, and I'll see everybody Saturday evening at the tree lighting if.
Anything for Chief McFadden?
No.
Excellent, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, so if they're not here, do you want to?
I think we could go into executive session, but I just wanted to mention one thing on the DPW, on the roads. We did hire beta engineering to, to do another assessment of our roads. They did one back in, I think it was two thousand and eleven, maybe?
Twelve.
Twelve? So, we want to have that redone and updated essentially, and identify, you know, what, what roads need to be just repaved, which ones need water, and which ones, the few that need sorage, just so that we, when we make these decisions, we're able to, you know, consider all the factors involved in doing a street over. And, so there'll be more to follow on that, and we'll, you'll, obviously, you'll get a copy of that report when it's done, and maybe we'll have them come in and present on it.
When is that the day of doing it?
Beta engineering is doing it.
When is it?
When? Did they already start?
No.
No? Okay. Soon, I mean, we met with them a couple weeks ago, and.
I just, premature bringing up, but for several years, I've had a gentleman calling about Forest Road.
I think that's on there.
But I had a lady call me this week.
Yeah, I, that's, that's in tough shape up there, and that's, that's one that they don't have sorage, and we don't know how.
Could use a water main upgrade.
Could use, so, so we got to look at that and say, well, do we do it all, or do we do a, a top coat and do it all in five, you know, we just got to figure out what it would cost, and that, that's actually what prompted the idea of having these different categories, so that we would clearly be able to make good decisions, and not just pave something without thinking about sore. We might still decide to just pave it, but at least we've given it some thought and made a, a decision, as opposed to not giving it any, any information.
Okay, all right, so we probably won't get any news by, in December, but January.
Yeah, I suspect, it didn't seem like it was a big project for them.
We can operate on what we've already done, because there's been a lot of more streets that have been paved and turned way shake now, so we're going to bring the vote that we have up to present date, and look at the ones that we shouldn't be probably tapping on the Forest Road, and a few other ones.
It's a good, it's a good way of doing it.
And then that ties into.
Good way of doing it.
The other thing I asked them to do on that master list is to identify the ones that are town streets and the ones that are private, so we can continue our, our process of accepting streets.
I believe Selectmen Kevin Sheen was one of the starters program three or four years ago, so we just want to keep it going.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, great, good progress. All right, we're ready for you guys.
Oh, I'm so nervous.
You almost went home, but.
Do they, do they have copies? Does Matt have a copy to go through? Yes, yes.
Please.
How's everybody doing? Brian McCauley, chairman of the Public Employee Committee, happy to report that the, our coalition bargaining unit and Mr. Gordon, and it sounds like you guys are on the same page with us, we've come to an agreement with our health insurance moving forward. I believe presented in front of you is a copy of the agreement. I'd like to highlight a couple things. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Gordon for an outstanding labor and management relationship like we've traditionally had here in Holbrook. The communication was great on our side and also the town side, so we want to thank not only you five gentlemen, but Mr. Gordon, and everybody involved in the negotiation process. This started back in May and went through the summer, and like I said, I think it's a, a fair, a fair deal, not only for the, the members that I represent, active and retired employees, but also for the town as well. So I'll entertain any questions that you guys may have.
Just want to remind the board that in addition to negotiating, prior to settling in on negotiating with the GIC, we did do quite a bit of due diligence in looking at other potential plans.
Yeah, we did, and both sides were certainly on board with that. We, we did get some other bids from outside vendors, and we both agreed that certainly this was the best, the best plan, not only for the town, but also for the employees as well.
And we also changed the, the split for.
There is a change in the split.
Associates, the employees.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a six-year agreement, and there is a, there is some changes in the current splits that we have now, that will, there'll be some changes starting July first.
Okay. So effectively, it's increasing every year. Right now, it's at a ninety-ten?
Ninety-ten.
Ninety-ten, with the town paying the lion's share. It'll be changed to, in effective July first, two thousand and seventeen, to a twelve, eighty-eight, twenty, twelve split, then effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, it'll be an eighty-seven, thirteen split. And then in July first, two thousand and nineteen, it'll be an eighty-six, fourteen split. And then in July first, two thousand and twenty, it'll be an eighty-five, fifteen split, which puts us a little bit more in line with surrounding communities in the, in the Commonwealth. So we do appreciate everyone's good faith in bargaining and doing the right thing, so we thank you very much for that.
Right.
Anything else you need to add, Tim?
No, I just, just to echo what Brian said, it was, it was, it was a long process, but I think we did all of the work that we, we, that we were asked to do by the board, and, and we put a lot of effort into it, as did Mary Beth and the whole team, so it's, it's good that we're able to come to an agreement.
Great, any questions for the members of PEC? No? So I move that we enter into the memorandum of agreement between the town of Holbrook and the Public Employee Committee, PEC, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen, through June, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, with the document as printed.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. McGahey. All those in favor? Excellent.
Yeah, thanks very much, and I just, the, the group that I left out was just the, the representatives from each bargaining unit in the town. You know, there was quite a bit of meetings that were involved in this, as you can imagine, and I just want to thank everyone's participation in this process, not only on your side, but also on our side as well, so, and Vice Chair Moriarty was, was very helpful to me as well, so, so thank you, and.
So we have the original, you have the original for us to sign?
She has everything.
Oh, you have? Oh, okay.
She usually has everything. Brian has everything.
Do we wait to sign it, or?
You can sign it at the end of the night. Yeah.
Is that fine?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're good.
Perfect, okay. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate that. And we are going to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy as it relates to collective bargaining with union personnel, the clerical union, and to discuss strategy as it relates to litigation, the planning board, and we will return to open session. By roll call vote?
Kevin, yes.
Rick, yes. Matt, yes.
Dan, yes.
Dan, yes. Fantastic, thank you very much, everyone, we'll see you in a few minutes. All right, great, welcome back, we are, we're out of executive, out of executive session, and we're going to take up a vote to accept the memo of agreement with the clerical union that's dated November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. This is an understanding that position of secretary for the Police Department, which